And the steps they can take to protect their personal or customers' information. And whereas striking a balance between privacy and innovation can have tremendous benefits to our society. And whereas Data Privacy Week encourages individuals and businesses to learn about technology and the tools available to assist them in controlling their own or their customers' privacy. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore recognizes January twenty eighth, January twenty second through the twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty three, as Data Privacy Week, and encourages all residents, businesses, and employees to learn about data privacy and put that knowledge into practice to keep our connected community cyber safe. Present this to Steve Rodriguez.
Just be on behalf of my side of security team, I want to thank you, Mayor, for your ongoing support of the program. Check into the data privacy of data we are entrusted with is a responsibility very seriously. And we look forward to continue to educate and informing staff and residents in the day of data privacy. So again, thank you very much.
And thank you for all of your efforts to protect us and the and the city. Certainly appreciate that. Uh, next is the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District, City of Livermore, uh, two thousand and twenty-three update presented by Ryan Clausnitzer, uh, the general manager. Ryan, thank you.
I know everyone here is not really for mosquito abatement, but I think I promised to make it interesting for you all to know that you have a great team working for you for the residents of Livermore and for the county. Um, I do this presentation about every four years. I think it's a good timing to kind of remember, uh, for your residents that there is a district in this area that provides free paid for property taxes, uh, paid for mosquito abatement work. So, next slide, please. So again, my name is Ryan Clausenster. I'm just going to do a brief overview that there is a district, and this is the work we do, how we do it, and kind of the next things that are coming along. We're not exactly doing what the Lord's Livermore Lab is doing, but we do some pretty cool innovations ourselves. So, next slide. So, uh, the, our district has been around since nineteen thirty, and really what founded on the other side of the, the hills was a salt marsh mosquito that can fly about thirty miles or so, and it really made life miserable. So, all the cities at the time formed this mosquito abatement district, and slowly, I think Livermore was, joined the district in nineteen sixty-seven. For forty-five years of that time, we had a trustee, remember, you may know James Doggett, he was our trustee for forty-five years. He left the district in two thousand and twenty, and the end of two thousand and twenty, it's been replaced by Stephen Cox. He's a resident of Livermore and I think an employee of City of San Ramon. But, um, you have always had great representation of Livermore and you continue to do so. Next slide, please. So mosquitoes, before there was districts, there was just groups of people that just won, when they, once they found the connection that, well, mosquitoes spread diseases. Before that, they thought it was the air or the noise, the humors, if you will, malaria, bad air. Then they finally made this connection here in Berkeley. A lot of it was that, no, mosquitoes actually spread this disease. So they formed these little civic groups. Next slide, please. And they pressured the state to form a mosquito abatement act, actually. So before, instead of having a city or county, most mosquito districts in the state are special districts, which we are as well. Next slide. And we have some code, and we are governed by the Health and Safety Code, which gives us some abatement powers and ability to find and enter property and that sort of thing. But we don't, we generally don't find or bait. We do have the powers, but we have no record in the last several decades where we've actually exercised those powers. We work with voluntary compliance. Next slide, please. As that's loading, so, okay, so yeah, so originally we were civil engineers. That's my, my, the first manager and the trustees worked on with the current, uh, the flood control district. A lot of the work that we did, we handed over to them and just moved water effectively. So stagnant water creates mosquitoes. Next slide. As a special district, as I mentioned, we have a large board. And the reason we have a large board is in that Health and Safety Code, every city that we are in, we get a trustee for, plus the county at large. So you may recognize about a third of them are council members, a third are academics, are people interested in mosquitoes. And the other third, to be honest, maybe came to the city and asked to be on the transportation or the, the planning commission. And the city's like, he'd be a great fit for the mosquito board. And that's how we have a nice mixture of our board members. So we're very blessed to be governed by this great board. And our board, again, is fifteen members. We have every city now in the county. And then the county at large is our actual agricultural commissioner. Next slide. Our board, besides hiring me and setting the budget, also has a plan. Again, we, we can look at the past, all we want for the last ninety years, but we're also looking at the future, which I'll touch on why we need to do that. Next slide. With this money that we get, we collect about, this is a property tax bill out of Hayward. So you see, we collect about through four, four dollars roughly on every parcel, a dollar seventy-four and two dollars and fifty cents. And we get a share of the ad valorem. So altogether, that brings in about five million dollars. So with that, you'll see on our property tax, if you're a property owner or even a renter, you'll see the line item. There are, we like to be very proud that we're the smallest line item on the bill. But with that, that's how we provide our services and pay for them. Next slide. Uh, we're very proud of our finances as well. Again, we've always achieved, year after year, the GFOA Certificate of Excellence of Reporting. This website, our budget is right there on our website. We always like people to know how we do mosquito control and why we do mosquito control. Next slide. Okay, off the finances into the fun stuff, the biology. If you don't already know, mosquitoes are a aquatic insect. But unlike a lot of aquatic insects, they don't have gills. They don't breathe in the water. They need, they need to go, like us, they need to go to the surface of the water to breathe. And they have a little siphon tube that they breathe through, like a snorkel. And they, most of their life is spent in the water, and then they will hatch, and then males do not bite, only females. Males can't even, don't even have the tools to bite. Only the female has the, the beak, if you will. So once they mate, the male, they, the females seek blood to create eggs. So that's why whenever you slap for a mosquito, you're only slapping female mosquitoes. Males cannot produce anything. So, and that's what also spreads diseases as well, is if that mosquito bit an animal or another human that hasn't infected disease, it's now spreading it to other people. Next slide. So again, you can see the male and female. Again, you won't find males very often, except for right where they hatch. They just come out and they look pretty, and they attract females. And then once they, they mate, they seek blood. And that's a female mosquito with a blood. Next slide. And these are sources throughout Alameda County, but here in Livermore, you'll see any of these sources. We spend a lot of time. Um, if you ever call our district, you will one hundred percent call Danny Sharkey. He's your technician in the area, the biologist. So you call us, we'll answer the phone, and we'll be out there that day. Sometimes at, right after we call, we'll send you him out and look to see what the issue is. We spend a lot of time in Del Valle. There's some, a lot of when the water rises and falls a lot, it creates a lot of mosquitoes, and all the canals we work in as well. On the north side of the, of the highway at, um, Springtown, there's a lot of seasonal wetlands as well. We spent a lot of time in those areas as well. Now, anytime there's standing water, next slide, which you guys have quite a bit right now. But that's the native mosquitoes. I'm going to touch a bit on the end of this presentation on non-native mosquitoes called invasive eighties mosquitoes, which is kind of the concerning thing that are just right over the hill. Uh, the closest they've been found is in the Stockton area. Next slide. And those mosquitoes like small containers, they're container breeding mosquitoes compared to, you know, marshes and whatnot. And the difference really is, so the current mosquitoes, the native mosquitoes, they spread things. You probably heard the last twenty years, West Nile virus or these encephalitis diseases. The non-native mosquitoes, invasive mosquitoes that we don't have in this county yet, they spread diseases. You may associate now with traveling, travel-borne mosquito, uh, diseases like dengue, chicken gunia, Zika, yellow fever. Uh, now those mosquitoes that for the first time in California history are, last year was deterred, found in Martinez, found in Milpitas, and again, the last couple of years in San Joaquin County. So they're coming to the area. Next slide, please. So when you think about mosquito control, now I'm talking about why we should control these, why this district exists and continues to exist. Now, how we control mosquitoes may be something you may not be aware of. Next slide, please. So one way, this is over the hill, but we do it here as well, is we just clean ditches, which is something that most people never thought they'd be doing, uh, with, with a mosquito district, but it's been the same for a hundred years. When water, uh, needs to move, we get shovels and we clean ditches, and that's a very ecologically way to do it. And this is all sensitive habitat. A lot of this is a national wildlife refuge. So there's lots of permits involved to make sure there's no endangered species da- damage, but that is a very easy way to control mosquitoes is just make water move. Next slide, please. Another way is fish. This fish is not native to the area, so we have to be careful where we place it. This, we only plant these fish in backyard ponds, swimming pools. Some people have swimming pools they don't want to deal with. We give you free fish. That's our most common way we interact with the public, believe it or not, is by giving them fish. So if you ever have, um, a, a pond and you just don't know how to control mosquitoes, let us know. We'll drop off some fish there. Next slide. We also use other products too. These are bacterias. A lot of these are, it's just a natural bacteria they found in the deserts of Israel that found out that they affect mosquitoes and midges. So it's a BTI. We also have an insect growth hormone that affects the, more the growth. And also with storm drains, the way that storm drains are designed, there's a little layer of water that always sits in them, that always produces mosquitoes. We have to put a little layer on top of that layer of water of mineral oil that prevents the mosquitoes from breathing, because they can't, their siphon tube can't reach the water, and they suffocate. So you'll see jeeps driving around all summer long, looking in storm drains. Next slide. And other ways as well, trucks, helicopters, thankfully not very often. Next slide. And drones. We do have a few drones that we use. We have permits, we have pilots that we are doing on the other side of the county, but we're starting to identify areas out in Livermore as well, working with the landowners to see that. It's really to be very specific on where we apply. Instead of having broadcast, we can just focus on areas where there's mosquitoes in control there. Next slide. Again, all this is on our website and available, all the products we use. We use a lot of BI, business intelligence software, Tableau. It helps us make decisions and it communicates with our public, like you all right here tonight. Uh, next slide, please. But again, if we do have diseased mosquitoes flying around, if we find birds, so again, a lot of the diseases are bird diseases. If we find a diseased bird, we'd find diseased mosquito, we will fog the area and knock down mosquitoes. So the last time that happened in Livermore, I believe, was twenty fourteen. In the southern part of Livermore, we did have some mosquitoes flying around, but ever since then, we haven't found West Nile virus positive mosquitoes and birds, and we haven't flogged in Livermore, so about six, seven years. So, next slide. Most times what people call us is fish. Most of those dots are, can I deliver some fish? So we're happy to do so. Next slide. Another thing about how we trap mosquitoes or how we find them out is mosquitoes, uh, as mentioned before, after they mate, they are looking for blood. So they're looking for mammals, they're looking for breathing CO2, ox, you know, the respiration. And we trick them by putting out, um, dry ice, which emits CO2. So the mosquito thinks they're going to buy, bite an animal, and instead it's CO2 in that little bucket, and they get sucked into a trap. And then we take that back to our laboratory and test it. So it's a little trick that we found out that actually we can outsmart the mosquito. Next slide. And at our lab in Hayward, we have a QPCR machine where we take the mosquitoes or birds, and we test them for presences of any pathogens. Next slide, please. And again, mosquitoes don't know boundaries, believe it or not. So we work with our partners in San Joaquin County in Contra Costa and share information, and we have mutual aid agreements with them. So we don't all, to all own this expensive equipment or this labor we share between each other to save more money for the residents. Next slide. And again, another part of mosquito control is community engagement. So we do have classrooms that we work with, uh, fairs. I think we were at a few fairs in Livermore last year at, uh, I think the Egg Days and, uh, Arden Wine Festival, and we also were at. Yes, yeah, we're always trying to make a trip out here. So it's a good engagement. So you'll see us there. But if not, please let us know and request a presentation. We'll be happy to do so. Next slide. And a cool social media. We were very fortunate in the, in the heyday of the internet, we landed mosquitoes.org. So it's a pretty easy one to remember. So, um, if you ever need to get ahold of us, I'm Ryan at mosquitoes.org is my email. So it's a pretty, pretty good way to connect with, uh, next door as well, is a very popular way as well. Next slide. All the work is on, a lot of work is on all private land. So working with our agency partners, East Bay Regional Park, East Bay Mud, Zone Seven, a lot of this as well, Del Valle, again, a lot of the work we do, we have to make sure we work with the, the, the owners of the land. Next slide. And a lot of the work we do, we want to make sure it works, you know, is it the effective way? Just because we've been doing it for ninety years, is it still working? So our lab also, besides doing surveillance, they're a research laboratory. We, we partner with universities. Every year we have a few interns from UC Berkeley, UC Davis. We also partner with Chanzuk, but, uh, Zuckerberg Biohub, and produce and peer-reviewed journals every year and present at academic conferences. Next slide. One of the last studies we did the last couple of years is really looking at health equity, you know, it was one thing we always wondered. Okay, people call us all the time, but do they all know that we exist? Are people preying the private sector, which is fine for services that are already paid for, you know, that can they just get this mosquito control done without having to pay for it? Well, it's already baked into the cost of the property taxes. So that's one thing we, we really identified areas in the county that maybe didn't know we exist. So we do increased outreach there, increased work there, and do education, focus in schools to know that this is already a sub, this is already, that's already taken care of. You don't need to reach out for this. Next slide. All right. Last couple of slides, I promise, but this is the fun stuff. So we have this new mosquito I've talked about, and it's called, we call it invasive. It's coming in eighties is the genus, eighties egypti, eighties eubipictus. And these two species are new to California. They're not a new, they came over with the Columbus Exchange in fourteen eighty-two. So we've had them in this country for many, many years, hundreds of years, but they've only been, no one thought they'd be established in California, but they have been. So how are we going to get rid of them? They've been trying in the Central Valley and Southern California for a decade, and they cannot get rid of them. They're like the cockroach mosquitoes. They're not in marshes. So they, they're really coming to very innovative ways to control. And I'm going to touch on three of them today. Next slide. So, um, we can skip this one too. Next slide, please. Um, jumping into irradiating male mosquitoes. Okay, so we can't fog these because they like, like bottle caps and, in areas of your backyard, you can't normally get. So one way they've done, and this is Orange County's doing this, it's also been done in the Tampa Bay area, is they take a bunch of mosquitoes, they grow them, they buy them, by the thousands, a hundred thousands, and then they, they zap them with X-rays. And they release the X-ray irradiated, irradiated mosquitoes into the wild. So they're sterile. The males are sterile now. And the females mate with the males, thinking that they've been impregnated, but they're not, because the males are, are irradiated. And it overwhelms the native male population. Eventually, the population crashes. This takes a lot of time trying to find out which is male and female. So it's a very long, labor-intensive, expensive process. But this is something that is currently done. It doesn't take permits, really. So this is a very easy way to just initially start seeing the population go down. Next slide. Another technique is with Wolbachia. Wolbachia is a bacteria that produces, um, sterile offspring. It's a natural bacteria. It's a, that affects insects, but they've commercialized this. It's with Verily, who, it's a subsidiary of Alpha, Alphabet or Google. And they did a, they did a program in the Central Valley in Fresno that called debug Fresno. So they did this long study to show infecting these males, and they drive this van around with a tube, releasing these, these, uh, bacteria-infected mosquitoes, and eventually they saw population go down. So there is parts of the country, you can sign up for mosquito mate. I think Kentucky allows it where you pay, it's a lot of money. It's like a thousand dollars a month to have this process to reduce mosquitoes in your area. But they are looking to have more, um, an opportunity for this is another approach that would really bypass districts and go right to the consumer to say, okay, you can have your own Google-funded mosquito control with this Wolbachia. Uh, next slide, please. The last one, this is a very new one. This is, it's only been done once in the United States. It has been done elsewhere in the, in the world. But in the United States, they did a Florida Keys project, and they're trying to get permitting in Visalia right now. And this is genetically modifying the mosquito. You actually take the, the mosquito and you, you create a self-limiting gene. I'm not a geneticist. So if you see me struggling through this, it's still hard enough for me to understand. But it's a self-limiting gene, whereas the females, when they're hatched, are non-viable. So eventually the population goes down, but they make sure that because GMO, you don't want that in the environment after generations. It only goes a few generations. So you can buy this box, you can see that girl there carrying this box. You put in your backyard, you add water, and it reduces, releases these only male mosquitoes, because the males don't bite. And they mate with the native female mosquitoes, and eventually the population goes down. So again, bit controversial, so some people are kind of, kind of cautious with this whole technology. But we are supportive of at least studying it, looking at it, and see if it's an option. Because again, this, we are getting local transmission now of dengue fever, I think as close as, um, Phoenix. So it is going to come here eventually, and the quality of life in California will change. Once you know, every time you get bit by a mosquito, you could get a disease. So we are looking at all these things. But thankfully in Alameda County, there should be some time. So we have plenty of time to study it. So, um, I think that's my last slide. So I'd like to thank you over time. I'm sorry I went over my ten-minute limit, but, uh, you guys have been a great audience, and thank you everyone for your, and I'll be Albany questions.
Um, early in my career, I actually did a lot of work with chyronoma midges. Uh, so, uh, they, worked very, very familiar with them, but non-biting, of course, that's a good thing. Uh, congratulations on bringing Albany, uh, into the field, uh, so into the fold there. That's very good. Uh, and you, you really sort of rushed past that, but, uh, but for opera fans, um, the, the fact that malaria or malaria is bad air, to your point. And for many years, people thought that miasmas or malaria, bad air is what caused diseases. And that was, uh, before they understood the germ model transmission. And, uh, you had, uh, Dr. John Snow that figured out that cholera was, was waterborne, not airborne, hence the malaria. So, great, thank you very much. Very interesting.
I seen you again.
Any questions? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, ask the city clerk to explain the process for participating in the citizens forum.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the City Council in the following ways. First, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Next, for agendized items, the public can address the City Council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens open forum and should be considered, should be focused on that particular item. Please note, speaker is not required to answer any questions from the City Council, and the City Council is not required to answer any questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address, to address a speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate in person or remotely as noticed on the agenda. To provide comment in person, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chamber. Speakers will be announced in the order received. We will hear from members of the public who are in person first, followed by those wishing to speak on Zoom. To provide comment by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until open forum period for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand at the beginning of each item. Once public comment, excuse me, once open forum opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce a conclusion of open forum after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, uh, we allow for about thirty minutes for comments. Okay, thank you. Um, the, uh, we allow for about thirty minutes for comments. Uh, let's see, so it's about seven thirty right now, so we'll allow thirty minutes. Uh, so we'll take it up to eight o'clock and then if there are any further comments after that, we will take it up after matters for consideration. Okay, uh, all right, do we have anybody who wants to speak tonight?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is David McWigan, followed by Shubhangi Kadi, followed by Alan Marling.
January two thousand nineteen, during your last one, I filed a complaint against the Livermore Police. This complaint was investigated, a report was produced and reviewed internally, and then you showed intentional malice by deliberately withholding the legally mandated response. In November twenty twenty, I wrote the newly appointed Chief Young asking about the response. And again, you showed intense malice by deliberately withholding the legally mandated response. And after you termed out, I wrote the entire city council, finally forcing Livermore to produce a legally mandated response. Sadly, but no surprise, Livermore again showed intentional malice by deliberately lying. And now that you have been elected mayor again, Johnny, well, now you own that deliberate lie, which is really quite appropriate since you started the cover up. Now, to be clear, Johnny, the event of the officer testifying directly.
Mr. As Mayor Marchand, thank you. No one has called me Johnny since the fourth grade and you're beyond the fourth grade, I believe. Mayor Marchand, please.
To be clear, Johnny, the event of the officer testing to directly observing the man suddenly start running into the path of a vehicle was less than two seconds from hitting him is well documented, as well as the event of the officer testifying that when the man watched him run into the path of the vehicle that was less than hit, hit, less than two seconds of hitting him, he acted safely. Something no honest person could conclude after watching a man suddenly run into the path of a vehicle that was less than two seconds from hitting him. This is an example of the all too abused practice of the Livermore Police of deliberately lying to trump up the charges to force people to take a plea. A practice, Johnny, that you clearly personally support because you personally are deliberately lying to cover it up. Now I'll admit, I can't stop you from lying. Your corrupt intent and the city's resources are too much for an individual to overcome. But I can make sure you can't do your cover up in secret. Because as long as you're lying to cover up crimes of the Livermore Police, I get to come here, Johnny, in public, in front of anybody and to your face, call you a lying, corrupt criminal. Now, Johnny, you really need to tell the people of Livermore how, if you weren't deliberately lying, you could simply release the report that you claim determined everything was unfounded. But instead, you're choosing as the lesser of two evils to be called a lying corrupt criminal to your face in public. And that tells the people of Livermore, all they need to know about what's really in that report. You can lie, Johnny, but you can't hide. Henceforth, you will be known as Johnny Marchant, the lying, corrupt criminal mayor of Livermore.
Next speaker, Shubhangi Kadi, followed by Alan Marling, followed by Trish Monroe.
Respected Mayor John Marchand and, and city council members. Good evening and namaste. My name is Shubhangi Kadeh and I'm a proud resident of Livermore City. Today I want to briefly share a recently concluded Seva Diwali food donation drive coordinated by Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangha, also known as HSS, a nonprofit social cultural Hindu organization. This Diwali food drive is a nationwide initiative conducted in thirty-two states and two hundred cities across US, including Livermore and across the Bay Area by bringing together many like-minded organizations. As we go through this winter and looming recession, there has been more than ever for everyone to come together to help the needy and eliminate hunger around us caused by pandemic, unemployment, food shortages and rising, rising food prices. Seva Diwali Initiative that was started by HSS a couple of years back is a nationwide food drive program where Hindu and Dharmic organizations, along with local volunteers who came together across United States and who believe in Seva Dharma, that is, service to humanity is service to divinity. We must give back to the society where we live. While we celebrated the major Hindu festival of Diwali, also called Festival of Lights, it is essential to think about less fortunate families who struggle to get two meals per day. Last year, Diwali was at end of the October. As part of Seva Diwali, we collected non-perishable food items for four weeks and donated them to the local food banks, food pantries, shelters and other needy people. We are humbled and happy to share that in twenty twenty-two, around sixty-five plus volunteers across nine cities, including the city of Livermore and its surrounding cities, join hands with nine local organizations, temples and schools and correct, collected four thousand pounds to serve around three thousand three hundred and thirty-three meals. We have donated this food to fourteen beneficiary organizations, including Tri Valley Heaven Pantry, Livermore Homeless Refuge in Livermore and Food Banks across the county. In twenty twenty-two alone, nationwide Seva Diwali food donated more than six, six thousand and thirty pounds of food to two hundred plus beneficiary organizations. This donation will serve over five hundred and twenty-five thousand meals. Lastly, I also want to let you know that from January fourteenth to January thirty-first, HSS has a Health for Humanity Yogathon Drive, where our volunteers go to local foods, local schools and communities to train people to do daily ten-minute sun salutation exercise for mind-body wellness. On behalf of Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangha, we wish you a very happy new year and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Alan Marling, followed by Trish Monroe.
Mayor and Council, I'm a Livermore resident. I couldn't be prouder that Livermore was the first to ignite fusion. I wish to thank the worldwide scientific community while extending my deepest gratitude to everyone who worked in the Lawrence Livermore National Lab. You may have heard of the moonshot when President John F. Kennedy challenged the nation to put a man on the moon within a decade. We weren't sure it could be done, but eight years later, we succeeded. Well, many people doubted we could achieve fusion, but sixty years later, Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory achieved ignition. Fusion is the reaction that powers the sun. Chemically, two hydrogen atoms fuse into helium. For decades, we tried to reproduce it on Earth as it can theoretically produce endless energy and zero harmful waste. On December fifth, local scientists finally got their sun shot. For the first time, a fusion reaction outside our closest star generated power. Now, the true challenge begins. We are maybe a decade away from a fusion power plant. Well, if we mobilize behind that technology like we did in the space race. In the nineteen sixties, we were competing against the Soviet Union. This time, humanity must stand together against a common threat of the climate crisis, and there's not a moment to lose. To max out our excitement for fusion, all you have to say is infinite green energy. The fusion generation will be ready to rise to that challenge. Before I was born, my father isolated deuterium with lasers. Many citizens of Livermore have ties to science. Though I look forward to more advances in fusion worldwide, I always will think of Livermore as the home of fusion. Our city was the first to flicker with starshine. Someday, I hope fusion will light up the world. Thank you.
Next speaker is Trish Monroe.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, I have Trish Monroe, resident of Livermore. Um, and a couple of years ago, every two years with the new council, new goals and priorities are set. The last council, uh, one of those goals and priorities was asset management and stormwater, uh, managing stormwater. At the end of twenty twenty-two, city council received a report on how well that had gone. And by the way, at that time, we were in the middle of a drought. Stormwater seemed to be a far stretch. As we know, for the last month or so, stormwater came down with a passion. I wanted to just express my appreciation, particularly to public works, to community development and to public safety for all the work that they've done in making this city in the past two years and in this current emergency. Thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was the final speaker.
Okay, I'm going to, uh, close the public comment period. Um, we have nothing on the consent calendar. Um, I'm sorry, we do, I'm sorry, we do, uh. Yes, okay, but, okay, so we have the, uh, still getting used to this script. Uh, consent calendar items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by the city council with a single action. Uh, members of the audience wishing to provide public input must submit a speaker card or use the raise hand feature in Zoom during the public comment period to comment on any of the consent calendar items. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak to a consent calendar item?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay, uh, does anybody wish to pull a consent item, uh, for discussion? Uh, will you move?
I'll move the consent counter.
Do you have a second? Okay, moved by council member Carling, moved by, uh, council member, or seconded by council member Variantos. Uh, any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Variantos.
Hi.
Councilmember Branning.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kick is absent for the record, and Mayor Marchand.
Hi. Okay, now, uh, we have no items on the public hearings. Uh, does anyone, uh, have any matters for consideration? No, uh, and, uh, so now we go to, uh, committee reports and matters initiated, uh, by council and, uh, anything? Counsel reports, anything? Okay.
Uh, just a small one. At the LAPT meeting, we approved a generator which will help make sure that there is continuous communication. So for those of you who use the app to follow, uh, your bus routes, it will now avoid interruption should there be any issues at the tower.
Okay, uh, customer Carling.
Yes, thanks. On the, uh, fourteenth of December, at a Stop Waste meeting, it was our first meeting in person in, um, a few years. I lost track. Um, on the, um, twentieth of January, I attended the Altamont Open Space Committee. And I wanted to, uh, point out also on the eighteenth of January, I had the privilege of administering the oath uh, to the new board members of the Wine Growers Association. That was a very fun event, uh, to participate in the, the new, uh, board, uh, of the Wine Growers Association. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Customer Variantos, any, uh, any committee meetings or anything to report on?
Uh, yes, I had several. One, I spent two hours on her phone because I couldn't figure out how to get their link on the computer. But, you know, I'm trying to understand what these committees are about. And since they've gone for two hours about electricity, I got some of it. So anyway, uh, uh, nothing else to worry, just I'm trying to learn what these committees are about, all about. I did go see Judy today at Monitor. That's the committee I'm on there too. And I told her what, when I first saw Monitor, I didn't mean, know what it meant. It is a landfill, kind of interesting name for a landfill committee. But, yeah, she just showed me around and told me what we're gonna expect to do. So.
Right, very good. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um, okay, the, uh, December twentieth, I attended the, uh, uh, Rayo Seco Basketball Tournament. It was very cool. The, uh, the passion with which these kids play is really quite exciting. Um, had the, uh, uh, Alameda County Mayor's Conference was, uh, January eleventh, uh, where all the mayors come together and talk about, uh, uh, issues that, that we share and how to, uh, move some of these things ahead. Um, last week I was at the US Conference of Mayors, as I mentioned, and spoke with the DO, representatives, representatives of DOE, DOT, uh, and also the, uh, uh, Federal Transit Authority and, uh, the, uh, Senators, uh, Feinstein and Padilla's offices. So we had asked them for some help, uh, as we move ahead and pursue a designation disaster, an emergency here in Alameda County, uh, so that we could apply for FEMA reimbursement for, uh, about so far, it was eight million dollars for the damage that has been, uh, incurred in this area. Uh, today, this morning, I was at the Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Junior Prayer Breakfast, uh, in Pusinton, uh, which really brings together a remarkable group of people that, that serve this community. We, we recognize several of them, uh, with the, the King Award. So, uh, that's all we have for tonight. Uh, it for, uh, this is the, uh, Lunar New Year. So I wish, uh, uh, everyone a very prosperous and joyful year of the rabbit. Uh, and, uh, as, so we, the city of Livermore lost a, a longtime friend and, and public servant. Uh, and, uh, that was, uh, former Mayor Dale Turner. He was, uh, Livermore's first elected mayor. He was first elected to the council in nineteen seventy-four. And, uh, he's served as mayor from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty-five, uh, and then was elected from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, the city flew the flag at half-staff, uh, for three days in remembrance. And, uh, tonight, I am, for the first time, I am going to use the perpetual gavel. Uh, now this perpetual gavel has engraved the names and the terms of all of the elected mayors of Livermore. And, uh, Mayor Turner is the first name that's engraved on this mallet. Uh, so with that, I would adjourn this meeting in honor and memory of, uh, uh, former mayor, Mayor Dale Turner. Thank you.